Hey.
Where did my agenda?
Recording in progress.
Okay, all right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Groton Committee of the Whole for Monday, January 13, 2025. We are in council chambers. I will call it all. We have Councilor Piazza, Councilor Sheffield, Councilor Norris, and Deputy Mayor Depot here, and the mayor's here. So new business referrals, the first one is for Senator Summers and Representative Bumgarner upcoming legislative session. So thank you both for coming out. Thank you both for coming out. We're missing, for those of you that are watching, Christine Connolly is absent because she's no longer a representative. She has taken an appointment from Governor Lamont to be administrative judge with Orpers Co. So that position will be filled within the next 45 days. There are caucuses that are happening this week in accordance with Connecticut general statute, and then you will have a new representative in the near future. So thank you for coming out. Thanks for being here. My purpose for having you here is just to get a general idea of what you have expected for the upcoming legislative session. I think it is a full session this year, which means a lot's going to be on the table. I've already seen a lot. And then we'll turn it over to the council for questions. So do we want to go with seniority? Or do we? Okay. Senator Summers, you have the floor.
Okay, there we go. So I think, you know, both Andre and I can speak to the fact that there's a lot of moving parts in this legislative session. I will let you know some of the committees that I'm on this year. They've changed a little bit. I'm now the senior deputy leader in the Republican Caucus. I sit as the ranking member of appropriations. So this is the first time in Connecticut history of four women putting together the budget, which should be interesting, you know. You know, a lot of women do household budgets, so we'll see how this all shakes out. We do have two people from Eastern Connecticut, myself and Kathy Austin, so I think that's really positive for our region. And I'm also the ranking member of public health. I also am sitting on regs review, education, commerce, and what's the other one? Another one. I'm on like every committee and subcommittee known to mankind. So it's very, very busy. I think, you know, appropriations and public health will take up the majority of the time that I will have there. There's also various caucuses that we both belong to. I think you're going to see the focus, which will be really directed by the majority party. Their focus is housing. I know that they've talked about education. We did hear in Governor Lamont's address that, you know, they're expecting ECS to remain the same. I was disappointed. I didn't hear anything about the excess cost grant. That's really the driver of cost for many of our school districts. My priorities are obviously public health, making sure that we have a budget that's balanced and fair to all of Connecticut, and that would be a focus probably on Eastern Connecticut that really hasn't had an opportunity to have that kind of focus before. I do have many environment bills that actually Representative Bumgarner and I went over today that we're co-sponsoring a lot of bills in environment and probably some other areas also. So I'm really here to listen. If you have specific questions, I'm happy to answer them. But our deadline for bills is Friday, so if you have specific bonding requests that you want us to enter, that's, it's good timing so that we can make sure that we enter them. And then it'll go through the whole bonding process of what, what needs to be done, et cetera. So that's kind of a highlight. I know that both of us have to leave at 6:30 because we have other meetings, so I'm trying to make it as quick as possible on the intro.
Okay, perfect. Representative Bumgarner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it's an honor to be with each and every one of you this evening. Very privileged to have worked with so many of you over the years, and especially this legislative session with obviously so much going on, as the good senator articulated. Ever more important that those lines of communication are as open as possible, and we work collaboratively, and I've no doubt will, will continue to do that. This year, I was appointed by Speaker of the House to serve on four legislative committees. As the good senator stated, I was appointed vice chair of the Environment Committee. I also serve on Finance, Revenue, and Bonding, as well as the Bonding Subcommittee for the Finance Committee, as well as the Energy and Technology Committee, a new addition, which is absolutely great for the city and Groton Utilities, considering most members of that committee represent investor-owned utilities. So really important to have the perspective of a legislator who represents a municipal electric utility at the table. And Transportation Committee as well. No shortage of projects happening in that department as well. With that, I think, you know, happy to hear some questions if the senator's okay with that and engage with a dialogue. The mayor communicates very regularly with the legislative delegation, has over the last two years since returning to the legislature. I know in the past, we've talked quite a bit about seawalls, about Rainville Avenue in particular. And so with that, I'll yield to the mayor for, for any questions and look forward to the discussion.
Okay. I'll open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you guys for coming. I know in the past, we haven't always had an opportunity to have you guys come, or our schedules haven't always aligned. And even just to have you here for 30 minutes, to me, makes a difference for, I know, you know, the mayor's in his office every day, but we're all volunteers, and so we don't have always the time to check in. But I, I'm happy to hear that you guys are on some like of the same committees. I think that'll be really good for the future. It'll be interesting to see who the, the next person is to join, join you guys, considering Christine's resigning. But I, I think we got a lot of feedback last time and a lot of updates from you last time. And I, I know that we've got so many projects kind of going on that, to my knowledge, I don't think we have anything, any big requests in terms of funding this.
We may. I will get to that when I.
But I, because I know, at least from my perspective, I can't think of anything that's pressing that we haven't already communicated. But I know, I think public health, to me, is going to be something that I'm following a lot because it touches so many things and it's, you know, there's, the bird flu is an issue. And so I think that it's kind of a heightened thing right now in everyone's brain. So I know that I'm, I don't have too many questions for you, but I just want to thank you for coming. And I'm going to try to be more communicative because I know residents are communicating more, too. I think it's kind of like a snowball effect. The more we communicate, the more they communicate to us, knowing that we're in contact. And I think that has happened over the last couple of years where we've gotten feedback. I know I talked to Senator Summers. I asked you some questions about warming centers because people were asking me about that. And so I think, you know, I just want to thank you again and say I like the increased communication, even if, you know, we can't create something out of nothing, at least passing information along, to me, has been very helpful. And I'm curious to see where the part, the, the whole team is thinking on housing because that is a problem I don't think necessarily we can solve, but maybe make inroads. I know I'm on the Fair Rent Commission in the town, and we don't get a ton of complaints, but the ones we do, it's difficult because everyone's having issues from tenants and landlords are having problems, and the laws have changed a bit. And so that's another one that I pay attention to a lot because I'm on that committee. But so that's all, that's all I have.
I can just respond on the housing, just quickly. I have met over the last year with residential home builders across the state of Connecticut. And one of the issues that they have brought to my attention are twofold. Number one is Connecticut has very different laws than any other state as far as the ratio between journeyman and apprentices. So we have all these kids going through workforce development to become home builders. We have a program at Stonington High School, for example. I think Groton may be interested in bringing that program inside. But Connecticut requires three journeymen to one apprentice. Every other state is one apprentice to one journeyman. So what they're telling me is we have to fix that ratio in the state of Connecticut because it becomes exorbitantly expensive to build residential homes when you have those ratios that can't afford to have three journeymen to one apprentice. So what happens is our apprentices are not getting jobs, and it slows down the whole process. So that's one thing that has been brought to my attention. We do have a bill on that to review it, to see if that's accurate. But I, I heard that resoundingly across the state, not just in our area, about what if one reason why they're not building as many residential homes as they could. Another thing that they had brought to our attention, which we're starting to fix, is the fact that if you build, this is just examples, if, let's say you're building an apartment complex of 100 units and 30 are set aside for deed-restricted, you know, affordable housing. You used to be charged as the owner, full market value for property tax for those 30 units. So we are in the process of looking at how do we reduce the property tax on the units that are affordable housing and set aside because what they're saying is I'm not going to build affordable housing units and take, you know, whatever the income is from that, but still be charged at the market rate for property tax. So those are some of the things. There's a lot of little details that are causing some of the housing issues. In addition, it's, it's a problem across the nation. It's not just Connecticut. But I think you're going to see a lot of ideas for incentives for how do we build new housing. You know, I have a bill in on accessory dwelling units to make it easier for people to be able to provide those on their current property. I know that's something that Santa Cruz, California did, and it was the only way that they were able to house their students because, you know, real estate, especially there, is at a premium. So looking at ways to make things easier and incentivize rather than penalize, there are a lot of bills, I'm sure you're going to see a lot of bills on the other side, too, to try to incentivize people to build more housing. So I just wanted to throw that out to you.
All right. Any other? Councilor Norris?
So in understanding all of that, like, what I gather is, so the state's way of addressing cost of rental units, so for example, I was reading somewhere recently that in southeastern Connecticut, average rent was like $1,800 to $2,100 for a one-bedroom, 700-square-foot unit is by just building more housing.
Well, if you have more housing, then there's more stock available, right? And then at some point, you reach the point where you can't charge those kind of rents. You can charge those kind of rents right now because there's such a premium for housing. There is not enough housing, so you can basically charge what you want with, you know, the theory is the more housing you have, the rents will decline. And, you know, you've seen that across the nation also. When you have limited resources or limited availability, the price goes up, just like anything else that you have in the market, whether it's sneakers or houses or cars. So the more that you put on the market, which is what we're trying to do, the, the theory is that the price will reset.
Right. I only bring that up because being a builder and building apartment buildings in the past five years, you're stuck at a, a cost. And that cost may actually cause an issue down the road if they were now saying, well, you built this building for whatever million at a cost of estimate of $2,000 a month, but now that's not possible. You got to rent it for $1,500. So how does the state help that builder recoup that loss? Is it purely?
You know, the state is not going to recoup that loss, just like if you buy a house and then the market declines, you know, that we're not in the business of sort of setting the market.
Right.
And, but I do believe that there's plenty of room. You know, during COVID, you saw a lot of the building materials increase exponentially, and they're not resetting down. So there's definitely an increase in cost of building. But what's happening now is we have such limited inventory that, you know, people can charge what they want to charge because there's just no apartments. You know, we have some new things coming online that are beautiful. I've actually taken Metora, the one that's over where William Sealy used to be. But, you know, they're pricey. That would have to be apartments probably that you would share with a couple roommates as a younger person to get in there. But the theory is how do we create more housing stock? And when we do that, the price of rentals will decline or reset to a manageable rate. And, and that's really the incentive. We can't do anything about people that, just like we can't do anything if you bought a house for too much and now it's worthless. But eventually, over time, you know, that, that builder will be able to recoup that over time, you know, with the rentals continuing on. So we, you know, my caucus wants to focus on incentivizing rather than penalizing because we found penalizing just doesn't work, right? And so I thought it was important to meet with the people that are actually doing the building, find out what their issues are specifically. You know, sometimes as legislators, I'm not a builder, Andre's not a builder, we don't know what the constraints are. But when you talk to the people actually doing the job, those two things were really number one on their priority. And a lot of them are actually doing business in this area, so it was interesting to hear what the constraints are and why they're not pursuing building more. The other thing is Kathy Austin and I have a bill in on CHIFA and the way that they help finance projects. And you can, sorry. You can see that Eastern Connecticut, when they have a limited amount of money, how the money is spent in Eastern Connecticut gets very little of it. So what we put in a bill saying, together, a bipartisan bill saying, you have to look at Eastern Connecticut, and it has to be fair and equitable across the state. You can't put everything in Fairfield County or everything in New Haven. Eastern Connecticut deserves its fair share. And those are the two co-chairs of appropriations. So it tends to carry a little bit more weight to people to recognize how CHIFA expends their money, and that's Connecticut has a finance authority. So all those little things will add up, and they will help.
Thank you.
Yeah, Senator Sheffield?
Speaking on the housing part, I've been in contact with a single mom in London regarding someone who sold their, their tenant property and someone else bought it, and all of a sudden, the rent jumps from 800 to 1,700. Those type of landlords predatory, basically. How do we address that problem? We got these investors coming in out of nowhere and swooping up property, and all of a sudden they're going to just jack up the rents and squeeze out low-income families out of their place. How are we going to address that as a collective state and, you know, to protect low-income single moms that are trying to get by? And we got these people looking to get, you know, big professionals in, and they're going to just jack the rents up and squeeze people out, and then all of a sudden, more affordable housing is gone. So that's something that we hope that we can, you know, that lack of affordable housing and then what we have gets swooped up by these hot-shot investors, come in and boom, jack up the rents, and then they squeeze people right on out. So I hope there's something that the state that you guys can address to protect these, these tenants from predatory landlords that will, like I said, when they, someone sells a property and another investor, these investors come in and then boom, they can't afford to, you know, have a place. So.
Unfortunately, currently with state law, there's nothing that protects the tenant you described from those exorbitant rent increases. Unfortunately, you know, there has been a lot of building stock purchase, which, which is great. You know, we want to see our homes invested in and improved for, you know, the health and wellness of families, but certainly not at the expense of families either, where, you know, families who have historically lived in certain neighborhoods are being displaced as a result of those high rent increases, which many of those working families can't stomach at this time because they've got other bills, they have other financial commitments, have to take care of their family, and especially if they are a single mother like you, you just described. So that's something that, you know, we, we ought to be looking into. Again, that was another concern we heard in Groton, not here in the city, but in the town last year, when there was an individual, a series of individuals who started purchasing properties, where a lot of folks started experiencing that displacement because they couldn't afford those run increases. So certainly at the legislative, we, we can work, work on those matters. And, you know, quite frankly, especially in the winter, we shouldn't ever put our constituents in a position where they're worried about eviction simply because the rent, rent is just too high for their families to be able to stomach.
Okay. Anything else? Well, Councilor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming, Senator Summers and Representative Bumgarner. I just, I just kind of want to reflect on what was said. So as far as when you were saying the journeyman to apprentices, it's, which I was not aware of, but I would say that my son went to a college, actually in Rhode Island, only because at the time he had the scholarships for it. So he was going to come back to Connecticut, but the schooling and the other things that they wanted them to do cost too much for him to do that. So therefore, now we're minus somebody who could actually live in, lives in Groton City, but lives in Connecticut and could work in Connecticut. So that was one thing. And there's not just him, there's other people who trans, drove, commuted from Connecticut to Rhode Island. So, you know, it's just, you know, where are we as far as education in that for people who want to do that, not just in the high schools, but maybe even technical colleges? You know, that would meet that, make it affordable. I'm not sure if it's affordability, but it seems to because he got, they matched him for monies, so I don't know what's, you know, how it didn't happen here. But anyway, with that said, and also reflecting on housing, I mean, I see a lot, we have a lot of, a lot of people that I work with. I find more often that we have, we do have a lot of single moms where I work, but they, when they do search for help, it's always they're just tipped over the scales where they cannot receive. And I don't know what we could do to do that, but it always seems to, everybody's bumped up. I myself at one time was flipped over into that. But then it starts to become, you have, you know, you have to pay for this, you have to pay for that. So when you do tip over those scales, then you're paying premiums on a medic, you know, an insurance thing, and then just get bum-barded. And, you know, they're just, you know, one sweep away from losing many, many things, especially for children. And I just wanted to ask, as far as up in the Senate and up in the state capital, what would you suggest? And I tell, I tell people all the time, has, this is my second term as far as counselor, to say you really need to be involved, contact your leaders, but what would you suggest for constituents to, or that you think they could do, should do, really push for, for them to be influential in things that are voted on in the state?
Well, I think, you know, thank you for all your comments. I think I will tell you that every year that there's bills put in about the cliff, you know, when you've reached a certain amount, you drop off. And we try to have bills that sort of phase in how that works. A lot of that cliff has to do with the federal money that comes in from the state, so it, it ties our hands on some level.
Right.
But that is something that always comes up. As far as reaching out, it depends, you know, if you go to the CGA website, it's www.cga.ct.gov, you can search anything you're interested in by the subject. So if it's housing, you can type in housing, and it'll show you all the housing bills that are in. If there's something in particular that you're interested in, the best thing that you can do as a citizen is to make your, your feelings known. You can email myself or Andre or whoever the next rep is and tell us how you feel. You may not get something back because I will tell you, I probably get like 700 emails a day from people. And I, I read them all, but there's just not enough time to respond to every single one. And, and many times, it's, I want you to know that I feel this way about this bill. So I've read it, and I understand how people feel. You can also call us. You know, our doors are always open, our emails are always on. I'm happy to reach back to people that reach out and let us know how you feel. And then if there's a bill that people are really interested in, let's say that there's a bill on housing that people are really passionate about, you can testify really easily. We, we will send you the information if you reach out on how to testify. You can testify in your pajamas from home at 2:00 in the morning. You don't have to come up to the state Capitol. You used to have to do that, and that was really hard to like wait for hours and hours to testify. Now you get a number, and if we know that you're in our district and you want to testify and your number 234, we have staff that will text you and say, you're up in 10 minutes. So, and you, you know, you can be in the comfort of your home. You can come up to testify if you want to. And, you know, as leaders, if Mayor Hedrick or, you know, Deputy Mayor Depot come up, they can go with us first at the head of the line because they're elected officials. But there's many ways to make your voices be heard. And, you know, the more communication we have from our district, the better decisions that we can make, make sure that everyone's voice is being heard. So don't feel, don't be intimidated, don't be afraid. We're, we're just normal people like everybody else. Please reach out to us. You know, I have people calling me from the hospital about their phone bills. So call anytime, you know, and email us, and if we can help you, we absolutely will. There are certain things we can't help. A lot of times, people confuse us with things that are happening in Washington, like, don't vote on this bill. And I can say, I promise you, I won't be voting on that bill. But, you know, if we can help you in any way, we will, for sure. And I don't know if you have anything else to add.
No, that, that was a great summary. Again, public hearings are really the one opportunity where our constituents can come up and voice their concerns virtually on any issue, as long as it's remain to that the subject matter that is being discussed in that public hearing. So I would definitely encourage all of you to, to come up. And when you do come up, definitely let us know. That way, we can show you around or, or support you as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
It is 6:30. How hard, how was your stop?
I think we can go for like another 15 minutes.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Quick question. Well, on the topic of testifying, I have testified via Zoom. Definitely was wearing like leggings with a blazer because you can only see the top half, so.
Secret, some of our legislators are in pajamas.
But yeah, and it was, it is super easy to do on any topic that you're, that you're interested in. On that note, where does that, I know that last year, I think the mold, it was a working group got formed, and where does that legislation stand or movement on that whole thing stand?
So I can tell you that the, the group formed, they, they met, they formulated their response, they presented it to DPH, and DPH has updated their mold regulations. They're in the process of that. That has to go through regs review, which I sit on now, has to be voted on, and then it becomes sort of their regulation. So there has been some upgrades to it. There's, there's still some difficulties with, with mold because of the way it's measured and, you know, how, how it's collected, but that did go through the process, and it's through regs review now. So I'm thinking that we're going to see that probably in the session to be able to update the regulations.
And then.
Sometimes it does take a little while to go through the regs review process, just by nature of how, how the process works. But yes, as soon as it is in the queue for regs review, that, that is.
We can let you know.
Telltale sign, good things are happening.
And then anyone that has questions, so probably like the Health District isn't going to have that updated information at least until like towards the end of the year, probably.
I can't give you the exact date, but the process is that the, the working group will deliver it to public health, public health updates the regs review. When that reg is finished, it goes to the queue for regs review, and that's when people could weigh in, like, we like this, we don't like this. We've had a few things come up for regs review just recently where the committee says, we don't like that, you have to go back and redo it. That doesn't normally happen, but that does happen occasionally. And that will be a time, if you're watching the regs review committee, I know it may be a little bit mundane, like reading an encyclopedia, but that's when people will be asking questions, why did you update this? You know, and there's a presentation given on why the regs are the way they are. And we can, I can let you know when that happens.
Yeah, because I know that there's, yeah, there's a lot of our residents who are interested in, in seeing that going, going forward, even though it's not going to help anything that happened in the past.
Right.
But I think the mayor and I both saw that the lack of regulation really handicapped our ability to do, to take swift action on, on that.
And the other thing that we have to hold DPH to is they were also required by that bill to create a PSA on how to prevent mold. I haven't seen that come back yet. Unfortunately, legislation, I was told, because I want everything done, you know, and tied up with a bow, and they said legislation is meant, meant to be incremental and unfortunately slows, and we get it right. So unfortunately, you pass a bill, it may take a year or two to get through the regs review process.
Makes sense.
You can pass all the laws in the world. It doesn't matter if the agency is not implementing it properly, properly or at all.
Okay. Councilor Norris?
Well, talking about passing laws, I'm always interested in where they came from. So there was one that authorizes municipalities to, they can reassess property value between 5% and 35%, or give like a tax exemption. And I was curious like where that came from. 35, 5 to 35 is such a broad number. Have you heard any municipalities talk about how, are they even going to address this, leave it alone, take it on or anything?
Do you know what that bill number is?
Seventy, uh.
I guess.
No.
Okay. I have to look. That's not my committee, so I'm not familiar with that. I don't have the top of my head. But a lot of the bills come from constituents that may have a problem, municipalities that have an issue, ideas that might just come to me or come to Andre. But I, I always feel like the best bills come from the people actually doing the job or doing the work. They'll come to us, you know, physicians will come to us and say, we need, we really need to be able to do this. Or teachers will come and say, this is a big problem we're having in the schools. How do you fix this? Or the current. Or the current regulation is such that I can't do X, Y, and Z. If you change this, I can be more efficient. So, they come from all different areas. And then there's lobbyists that have, you know, interest groups that put their bills in too. So, a bill can come from anywhere.
Right, right. I was just tracking tax bills, and that one just stuck out.
So, I do have a bill in that you might be interested in quickly. It's a bill to combat the effects of tourism, and every town has tourism. And, you know, I've, I've talked to many different municipalities that have tourism issues. I know Mystic and Groton have them in particular. And some of them wanted us to dedicate a certain amount of the sales tax back to those municipalities. I don't see that happening.
No, I agree.
So, I tried to come up with a creative way to allow municipalities to figure out how they can pay for some of the impacts of tourism. So, I do have a bill in that says, if you are a municipality, it would be enabling language that you can decide if you wanted to add a, another borough tax, up to 1% on meals, 3% on venue, and up to 3% on hotel lodging. And you would have to decide if that's something that you want to do, and you would vote it through. And if so, Stonington or City of Groton could levy a tax on, let's say, you know, a restaurant, you know, we're paying 1%, you could add another .25 for that, and it would come directly to your town, and you could use that to offset the impacts of tourism, which could be roads, upgrades to sewer, it could be policing, however you want to apply it towards tourism impact. And that would give towns the ability to fund some things. I know I hear repeatedly in certain towns, they have a lot of tourism. If you have an event, like you have the Brew Fest in, in the city, do you have to hire police, and it doesn't have to be paid for? That might be a way that you could pay for those things, or the municipality could fund those things without impacting the taxpayer. So, just trying to think of creative ways to provide you with an opportunity where the money would not go to the state and then be in the sausage maker and sent back, because you won't get anything. It would come directly to you. So, I don't know where that's going to go, but I know that CCM is really interested in that bill, trying to think of different ways to create revenue without it really impacting the taxpayers.
Okay. Counselor Sheffield, quickly, because I want to get a couple of questions in.
Going over the cameras for the police, for monitoring speed on our roadways, that was passed by the legislature. My concern was the, I guess, they encompass the driver as well as the owner of the vehicle as far as, you know, one entity, I guess, so to speak. Now, of course, they check the registration of who owns the car. I'm assuming the owner of the car will get the ticket. What, to me, what that does though is, you know, the person that drove the car doesn't get accountable. You have to recognize, let's say if someone borrows someone's car, and they get the ticket to the owner, then that person who drove the car gets a free pass, and, but the owner gets the ticket. I understand that part, you, you assume the risk of letting someone borrow your car. But let's say sadly, if it's a family member, a grandmother that lets their grandchild drive, take the car, and all of a sudden, you know, the grandmother's like, what's, what's this ticket, you know, and she probably never got a ticket in her life possibly. And then all of a sudden, they have to address it with their grandchild that, you know, you shouldn't be speeding and stuff like that, I got to pay this ticket, or you're going to try to make your grandchild pay for it. But on the other end of things, on the law enforcement end, that grandchild gets a free pass, doesn't get a ticket, and who's to say that person learns any lesson from it because they're not accountable to law enforcement, they have to be accountable to their grandparent. So, that's something that I, reading through that, that statute there, that, that kind of was concerning about, you know, the cameras. So, it's just, just a thought there, I wasn't sure if that was thought through, through the whole process of where, okay, it's great that you caught that car speeding, but yet the driver technically may not be accountable because the owner of that car isn't the person that drove it. So, so I've kind of feel that it, it lets someone who's reckless possibly get a free pass out of it, so they don't stand accountable to it. So, that's, that's what I'm reading. I might be wrong about it, but it's what I saw based upon what we passed with that ordinance, so.
Great, and I think you're correct, and that was debated in the legislature. You know, that's always, unfortunately, no law is perfect. I think the thought was, we want to empower municipalities to be able to help reduce speeding without, you know, with the decrease in officers that we're seeing, et cetera, and, and that's why they empowered you to make the decision if you wanted to have those cameras or not. You know, I would, I would argue that, you know, if, if it was my child using my car, and they got a ticket, they would have to pay for that ticket in some way, shape, or form, and they would not be borrowing my car again. So, I mean, I understand that there are like downsides to it, but, you know, that's one of the reasons why we, it wasn't mandated, it was enabling language that you all got to decide if you wanted to put the cameras in or not, so.
And, oh, and that, you're absolutely right, Senator, that, that's part of the reason I did support it. It is, it's not prescriptive, per se, we're not, the state is not imposing this law on, on municipalities to implement. It is the choice of municipalities, and I certainly support that choice, and should the city move forward with it, I, I, I think that would be great, especially with respect to making sure that our, our roadways are safe, especially for pedestrians, and, but nonetheless, you know, there's always concerns regarding civil liberties whenever, there is questions about installing cameras of any types. But I, I think you, you have a delegation that's always willing to, to listen to those points, especially before we vote on significant legislation like that.
All right. A couple of things. I listened to you guys when you talked to the town council, lead remediation is a big deal now. We have a program, we're looking at that, we've identified some residents that have lead, and Senator, you talked about DPH. I went on our DPH website, I didn't see a program yet, or is that something that's coming?
It just, it hasn't quite like kicked in yet.
Okay.
But I can send you the information.
All right, I'd appreciate that, because I do want to get that out to the residents, I want to go proactive on that.
So, that's in the House, and then the other lead is in the, you know, like, like the, the roadways, that's the federal.
Right, absolutely. The other thing is, thank you for your support of the Enterprise Zone. We got 89.59% of what we asked for, which was $641,000, total is what we got, that's good. I'm interested, so the deputy alluded to whether or not we need some money. I was just briefed Friday about the Shore Avenue Sewall Project, due to some as found conditions with bedrock or lack of bedrock, there's been, there's going to be a cost overrun, and so, any amounts of money that you can find, I'd appreciate it. I've already reached out to Congressman Courtney's office as well, actually, I called Congressman Courtney, and, and his office called me back, and so, I'm looking at federal as well, but I'm also, and because of the new administration earmarks are probably, are in question at this point, and so, that's an issue. We're also going to get in touch with DEP and see if they have anything there, so.
So, if you can send us what you need, like if you want to just email me and say, you know.
Well, I don't have the exact number yet, because.
Our bills are due Friday, so if you.
Okay, so I.
Like, you know, we're better off asking for more, because it usually gets negotiated down.
Okay.
We're asking for bonding, so if you have a, a rough idea on what you think you are going to need, at least we can get the bill placed.
Not a problem. I will get that to you tomorrow.
Okay, and then Andre and I can co-sponsor that to put that in, to try to cover, now, obviously, bonding takes a while, as you know. In the meantime, we can look through the deep grants to see if there's something else that may be available to help supplement.
Understand. And also for, for this year and for the future, any resiliency grants that are out there, Shore Ave is flooding more often now, Jupiter Point is flooding more often now, so if there are any grants out there that are available for resiliency, that's important to us. And then, the last thing, although this doesn't affect us directly, it does affect, affect us indirectly, I saw that you put an education bill in.
Me?
You did.
Okay.
You put an education bill in, and I'm a little interested in what's, what that's about, and we want to try to maintain the Alliance District funding that we have, because that does impact the town, and that could be, you know, if they lose that money, that's a potential two-mill increase, which impacts City of Groton residents as well, so.
Do you remember what the bill was?
Uh, I wait.
I have like 100 bills.
No, I know you do.
Was that to make?
Don't apologize for doing your job.
Like, to be counted as a military town?
No, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you the number.
Or you can, I can tell you right now that there's no stomach.
Proposed, proposed bill number 47.
Okay.
An Act Concerning the Education Cost Sharing Grant for the Town of Groton.
Yeah.
Is the title of the grant.
To try to.
Oh, title of the bill, excuse me.
Yeah, that was try to fully fund the excess cost grant, which needs to be, I was disappointed in the governor's speech, he said he's going to hold, you know, education funding harmless, but there was no discussion about the excess cost grant, which is where all the cost is for special education.
Right.
We do have a special group that is working dedicated just to this, you know, but it particularly hits some of our small towns where it costs $25,000 to educate a student. They don't get any more money until four and a half times that student, so.
Right.
That really needs to be looked at in a holistic way, so that's what that bill is about. I don't think there is any stomach for taking any school off the Alliance District once you're on there, that you have remained on there, we have continued to remain on there. Should we come off the Alliance District? You have a delegation that has fought for, God, I've been there almost 10 years now, on trying to make sure that our funding is appropriate. We're definitely an outlier because of the military base.
Right.
And, you know, you will have our full support in making sure that we don't lose that. We understand it affects everyone in Groton, including city residents.
Absolutely. Counselor Piazza, do you have any last thing, any last comments, questions? Okay, all right. Thank you both for coming out. Counsel, thank you for your questions.
For short, we do have another meeting that we have to get to, but please just send us some information, and again, all of you, please call us or reach out anytime, you know, we, we, we work day and night, actually.
Oh, it never ends.
And we're happy to get back to you. And if you get those numbers, we'll get something in by Friday.
Yes, ma'am. I'll get that to you tomorrow.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel.
Thank you both. Okay, Chief, you're up next. Police Department Bulletproof Vests.
You can ask for money for that too? No, just kidding.
You're the Mayor and Counsel. Councilman Sheffield, just to answer your question on the cameras, there isn't appellate process that would be in-house as far as any concerns if we got the wrong identification, so that information could be provided to us at that time. I just wanted to answer that question. I'm going to get to this, though.
Sure, go ahead.
All right.
And I, I also want to say on, on this topic, because if we start to get into a discussion, we potentially violate FOIA but not have it on the, on the agenda. Chief, please continue.
Yes, so, under the Office of Justice Programs, this is an annual budget that we apply for, and it's pretty much a fill-in-the-blank for us. We have to provide the information as far as how many vests we'd like, and we actually have to assign them to the named officers, which is an update from the, the way the program used to be. It's a 50% match, so the dollar amount for this one would be $1,774.78, so that would be the 50% cost of the $3,400 that we're actually spending. And I'm just here tonight to ask you to allow me to apply for the grant and then accept its amount.
Okay, I'll open the floor for discussion if there's any question. Counselor Sheffield?
How many bulletproof vests, Chief?
So, this would be three.
Just three?
Yeah, bulletproof vests right now are running about 700 and, no, $798. So, I'm sorry, this would be four vests, so about $798 is what we're looking at.
And the other vests are in good shape, they don't?
Yeah, so the life expectancy on soft-body armor, which is what this is, is five years from the manufacturer. So, and again, as part of the process for applying for the grant, we have to indicate that, number one, it's on their test and wear list, because they have approved vests only, you just, you can't go outside of that if you want to apply for the funding. And number two is they know what the manufacturer's warranty is, either a five-year or a 10-year type, so.
Any other questions? Counselor Piazza?
Just kind of off the cuff, so if it's damaged in any way, they just refurbish it, give you another.
So, so, if a bulletproof, if a bullet-resistant vest is damaged, whether it be in layered Kevlar, then we have to replace it. It depends on what that damage was, obvious, so sometimes, obviously, it will take around. And that, that will cause damage, that would be an automatic replacement. Other times, it may be an edged weapon or a knife weapon that somebody comes at us with, it could be something that's pointed, it could be as simple as a screwdriver, anything that's used. If we're talking about, you know, assault on a type, on an officer, other than that, if the officers were neglected, then they would be responsible for their equipment because they are allotted a uniform allowance, and that would be, this would be an allowable purchase under that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this, the Mayor and Counsel meeting, January 21st, 2025.
So moved. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries? Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, Groton Utilities. First up is Transformer Repair.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Counsel.
Good evening.
So, tonight, I am requesting your approval to create a purchase order for Phasor, to Phasor Engineering Services for not to exceed $351,894.00. The work is to refurbish one of the transformers that we have at the Buddington Substation. It's a transmission transformer, it's 115,000 volts to 34,500 volts. The transformer that's out there right now has been leaking oil, it's no longer reliable. The scope of work would include pre- and post-testing, isolating the secondary bus that goes out of side of it, draining all of the oil, there's almost 7,000 gallons of oil within that transformer.
Wow.
It's going to be replaced back into the transformer, rebuilding all radiator gaskets, valves, new cooling pumps, flow meters, replacing some access gaskets, and restoring the unit back to operable condition. Some quick notes on that transformer, it was manufactured in 1970. When we refurbish these things, they're usually good for 30 years. The last time that it was refurbished was after a light, it took a lightning strike in Hurricane Gloria, which was back in 1984. The new transformer, just so you know, you might think that that's a large amount of money, $351,000 for refurbishment. A brand-new unit is almost $6 million. Currently leaking dielectric oil, as I stated, that's insulating oil that does not conduct electricity. And I'm happy to answer any questions that I have, that you may have for me.
Hey, I'll open the floor for discussion, questions? Counselor Sheffield?
Bill, does any other municipality buy new transformers, or is it normally, you know, you're refurbishing to keep the cost lower, is that, you know?
That's a great question, Counselor. So, the smaller transformers, absolutely, they, they have an end of life. When you get a big investment like these are, you know, $6 million, you refurbish them, you refurbish them every 30 years. So, basically, the core is solid, the integrity of the outside is solid, it's just the cooling pumps, all of that stuff that goes through, and they'll go, they'll do all the testing that goes along with it. So, it's an investment in the future, it'll get you another 30 years. So, this one here, since 1984, we've got.
Over 30.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, quite a bit. We got our money's worth in the last time.
Good, good. All right, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Counselor Piazza?
That's what I was going to ask, is that, so, when you do refurbish this, so this refurbishment, if that's word, will, we're looking at another 30 years down the road, and how many times does refurbishing, or what history do you know, is how many times a transformer of this size has been refurbished and continue, how many times would that happen before we actually come into a large cost?
So, good question as well. So, that's depending on, you know, a little bit of luck there, too. So that's depending on, you know, a little bit of luck there, too. So refurbishment also includes some pre- and post-testing. So we do a lot of, you know, continuously every year, we do preventative maintenance to the units, right? So that's your investment into the unit, you know, and the PM money that you put into it, the PM time that you put into it adds to the longevity of the unit. So we're very good with that. The substation team is very thorough with that. As you can say, this is from 1970, and it's still going strong. Testing's going well, maintenance has been going very well with it. So it's a good investment.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I know you said 7,000 gallons of oil.
Yeah.
Okay, so that goes back in, or...
That will be.
It's new? It's not like oil change where you put in new?
No, this is, it's tested for impurities. We keep the moisture out of it, of course, right? So it's pumped out, stored in a truck or a tank, and then when the work's all done, it will be pumped back in.
And just for knowledge sake, what kind of oil does it take?
It's dielectric oil, is what it's called. So it's a type of oil that does not conduct electricity.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of January 21st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, this passes. Fleet vehicle purchases, Jeremy? Does the council know you?
I'm gonna introduce myself.
Okay.
Good evening, my name's Jeremy Dusa. I'm the manager of operations for Groton Utilities Electric. Tonight, we are here to request three, replacement of three vehicles. If it's okay with the council, I'd like to kind of start with one of them, and then the other two are kind of matches, so we'll kind of do those together, if that's okay. So the first vehicle that we're looking to replace is, unit number is 94E, it's a 2008 Ford van with 98,006 miles on it. It's been a reliable vehicle over the years, however, it's starting to show its age. This vehicle is one of four that is used daily by the substation crew. Some drawbacks to this vehicle currently are limited cargo height, it cannot move a full-size gas bottle in the rear of it, is not four-wheel drive, and is difficult to drive in snowy conditions, and it has no ability currently to tow a trailer. All these drawbacks would be covered with the suggested replacement, which would be a 2025 Ford F-350 fitted with utility body at a cost of $93,207.90. This vehicle would be procured through Jangars Ford using the state bid list. Some added features to this vehicle would be a snowplow. This would allow us to better access remote recloser locations and access substation gates in snowstorms. It also would be equipped with a lift gate for lifting heavy cargo into the rear of it, which the van currently cannot do. Do you have any questions on that particular vehicle?
Questions or comments on that vehicle? Okay, please go to the next.
Okay. As I said previous, these two will kind of be, the replacements will be identical, so I'll just read the older vehicles that we're planning to replace, and then some features of the new vehicles. 88E is a 2007 Ford F-450 with 104,523 miles on it. This truck has been the workhorse, been a workhorse over the years, and the line crew's primary means of moving medium-sized transformers and other large equipment. Currently, the bed is, has lots of rust damage and is developing holes. Some drawbacks to this vehicle are, the bed is textured, so when we use it as a dump truck, because it is our primary dump truck, debris gets hung up in the bed and becomes a crew safety issue. Sorry. Oh, there's no storage for PBE for the crews. It's a single cab truck, so during rain events, we have to kind of stack everything in the middle, which becomes a hazard. And also, the truck is very loud. It doesn't have much for, I mean, it's a 20-year-old truck with lower-grade emissions. All right, the second truck that we're interested in replacing would be truck eight. This is a 2012 F-250 with 194,236 miles on it. This truck has been well-used, and has been, we've been trying to keep it going over the last couple of years. Most notably, two years ago, we purchased a bed for it. The original bed had holes in it due to rust damage. Some drawbacks to this vehicle as well are no storage for PBE, it's a regular cab truck. It also has a smaller cargo area and towing capacity. We're suggesting that both these vehicles are replaced with matching 2025 Ford F-550 extended cab dump trucks. These trucks would be four-wheel drive. They'd be equipped with a fold-down stainless steel bed. They would be equipped with a lift gate, which is made for dump trucks. It has, maintains its dumping feature while being able to lift heavy objects. Yeah, that's about it for the...
Question or comment, Councilor Craigson?
Thank you. Thank you for the detailed information. I know sometimes people come and we ask a lot of questions, but when a lot of them are already answered in your presentation, it makes our life easier. So we are, two of them, we are upgrading to a heavier-duty vehicle than we've had in the past, correct? From the 450 to the 550?
Yes, yes. The 450, yeah, the cargo capacity for the 550 is greater, so yes.
And do we expect that to increase, like, maintenance costs at all? Is it the same to, like, fuel or any of those, the kind of cost of ownership of the vehicle? Is that going to change drastically because we're getting a bigger vehicle?
The 450 and the 550 both normally use the same engine, so fuel economy is relatively the same, so I don't see any additional cost. In regards to the 250 being upgraded to the 350, I'm sorry, to the 550, it is a heavier-duty truck. We're interested in kind of redundancy in the fleet. We want to make sure that we always have access to a heavy-moving vehicle. The 250 is actually a little light for what we're trying to do with it. It does have difficulty when we fully load it, especially with the cable spools in the back and such. So we, I don't really intend, I don't really see too much associated costs with the vehicles.
I think, and I just want to add, I think one of the things, you know, that our residents appreciate about the utility is our predictability, and one of the reasons is because we do look at the future of how useful things like our vehicles are. So I'm all for making sure that we have the equipment that our staff needs to get the job done, because, you know, now that we've got such a reputation, our residents do expect that reliability, and that's the way that it gets done, is looking at those things. So thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for wonderful explanation of the vehicles. What's the warranty on them?
Unfortunately, I'm not very familiar with the warranty on the particular vehicles in question. I can look into that, and I can have that sent to the mayor. Mr. Merrick, you could help me distribute that.
Sure. Send it to me, and I'll get it to the council.
Thank you. Okay, so, and I'm assuming with being 2025s, that they would last just as long as these vehicles have, if not longer. And the, so it seems that's a common problem for the beds to rust and get holes and so forth. I'm assuming that what's logged on and pulled off and tracking of different things. So with the stainless steel bed, we're assuming those will have longer life, yes? So we'll have to replace them?
That is our...
Okay. And I was looking at, in what we received, there's a couple of lines that are highlighted. One is the power equipment group, and the other one is the backup camera kit.
Yep.
That is included, or is not?
They're highlighted because we had them added. They were not on the original quote.
Okay. And on the backup camera kit, does that, I know what the backup camera is, but I mean, do you, does it have automatic alarming when you back up, or no?
I believe the 350 does. I'm unsure on the 550. I could look into that for you, though.
Okay. The only reason I ask is because I'm a bus driver, and we come across you all on the road very often. And so it just always made me wonder, you know, like, so when you guys move, you know, is there something that's alerting and so forth and so on? You know, so it's just, just something to pass out to the bus drivers, oh, like, just hey, they're gonna have, there's gonna be these bright purple lights that are gonna flash if they back up, or something, 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 you know, just for an alert. But it's just something I just want to know on that. And I think it's great that you're doing the snowplows and the four-wheel drive, so get the job done more efficiently. Thank you for your info.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Norris?
If you can just remind me, so we're replacing electric vehicles?
Yes, they're in the electric fleet, yes. They're not like EVs.
Okay.
All right, so hold on. Electric as opposed to the water fleet?
Mm-hmm.
Right? So they're not electric vehicles in that they're, you put them to the charger, they're electric as in division of the company?
Thank you.
Okay. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor DePoe?
That's funny, because I thought that at first, too, and I was like, wait a minute.
That's what I was...
They don't make an F-550 electric.
One bit.
I just wanted to add that the backup alarm, it does have it on both quotes, it's just in different spots. On one quote, it's at the bottom, and on one quote, it's like six up from the bottom. So they do, both the quotes do list that there's a backup alarm, not just the camera kit.
I was gonna say, most vehicles of this size and this use, that's mandatory to have.
Just for clarification, we're asking about the sensors in the backup system. I believe that might just be the audible backup alarm for the vehicle?
Right.
Okay.
Right. I just, the reason... I ask that is because I know I've asked it way in the back, and it's probably a smaller truck, but it didn't have it, so I'm always looking at the safety, especially when we come across, and like, if we're, you know, I look at the bus kind of thing, like, if we're crossing children near the construction, blah, 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 would we hear you backing up? You know, that we need to signal to them or whatever, you know? And it's just always safety, 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 so...
I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question. I thought you were asking if the backup camera system had, like, sensors, which I don't know the answer to that.
Oh, okay.
But they are both equipped with audible alarms.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council of January 21st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, I'm taking the donation request off.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill and Jeremy. And because Director Uous is not here, and we need to talk, he and I need to talk about a couple of things, I want to make sure that Groton Utilities is also not funding these guys. And if that's, if I figure, so it'll either come back to you, or it won't, based on that conversation. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned at 7:08. Thank you, Council, for coming out, and thank you for your questions.